I call this regular meeting of the Comal ISD Board of Trustees to order at 7:00 PM on October 23rd, 2025. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551.071 through 551.089. Good evening, board members, district staff members, and members of the audience. We'll begin this meeting as we do every meeting. You are free to join me in standing as Amy Shaw leads us in a word of prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Pledge to the Texas Flat.
If you so choose, let us pause in gratitude and purpose. Lord, we give thanks for teachers who inspire, the staff who support, the families who believe, and the students who persevere, challenge, and dream. May we never lose sight of the vital role public schools play in building a just and thriving society, and that strong public schools are the foundation of opportunity where every child, regardless of background or circumstance, is welcomed, taught, and nurtured. Guide us to lead with wisdom, with open minds, and compassionate hearts. Let our words and actions reflect kindness, respect, and a shared commitment to the well-being of students, teachers, staff, and families. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one nation.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to our motto, "Growing Greatness." The board uses this motto to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You'll get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board at open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session, as stipulated in the Texas Government Code Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, the board members present are Amanda Jones, Russ Garner, Jason York, Tim Hennessy, Amy Shaw, and myself, Courtney Biassati. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. Before moving on to the next agenda item, I'd like to remind you that the board will accept comments from citizens of the district and from district employees. Persons who wish to speak during public comment audience participation must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. When the board addresses Agenda Item Number Three, Public Comment Audience Participation, you'll be invited to the podium to speak to the board. The first agenda item is Item Number Two, Board Recognition. I will now turn it over to Mr. Daniel Mendez.
Good evening, President Biassati, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Chapman. We're excited to share recognitions with you this evening and appreciate the students and parents who took the time to join us to be recognized. Parents, please know that you will be able to take photos after each group is recognized. Good eve... We begin with recognizing a Smithson Valley High School CTE student who is nationally recognized after placing second for the second year in a row at the Skills USA National Skills and Leadership Conference this summer in the Practical Nursing category. As a reigning Skills USA Texas two-time state champion, she competed against the best from across the country. The Practical Nursing category requires competitors to perform procedures and skills guided by the state Board of Nursing. To consistently compete at this level, it requires focus, accuracy, and determination. Tonight, we are happy to honor Clarissa Wallace. The Smithson Valley High School CTE Health Science teacher is Dr. Jennifer Correa. Parents, please come up to take your photo. Our next and final recognition of this evening honors nine students who received the highest individual honors at the UIL Texas State Solo Ensemble Contest. They were named Outstanding Performers. Only 2% to 3% of the solo performers at the state contest are selected for this prestigious award. The following Comal ISD students earned their title of 2025 Outstanding Performers. Anija Johnson from Canyon High School, Outstanding Performer Vocal Solo. And she's accompanied by Fine Arts Coordinator Jay Martin. From Canyon Lake High School, Jackson Alvarez. He was Outstanding Performer Vocal Solo. And from Smithson Valley High School, Craig Hughes. He was Outstanding Performer Piano Solo. Piano Instructor Diana Cooper. Parents, if you want to come up to take your photo, please do so. And board, this concludes our recognitions for this evening.
The next agenda item on the agenda is Number Three, Public Comment Audience Participation. Persons who wish to speak during public comment audience participation must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. Ms. Comstock, do we have any public comment audience participation? Before we begin, I'll remind our audience members of the board's procedures for handling public comment audience participation. Anyone interested to speak in person during public comment audience participation must have completed a form and listed the topic as they wish to discuss prior to the start of the meeting. Each speaker will be allowed to speak once during public comment audience participation. It will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the board dictated by Board Policy BD Local. Because the board wants to hear from as many of you as possible while also keeping the meeting running efficiently, groups of more than five people who want to present a particular viewpoint on a topic should appoint one person to speak on behalf of their group. Please remember that the board cannot deliberate on any subject that is not included on the agenda for this meeting. Board members will listen to comments but will not respond or answer questions. We also ask that you not discuss students who are not your own child. The timer will be shown on the screen in front of you and will begin when you arrive at the microphone to speak. Again, the speaker's presentation will be limited to three minutes. Our first speaker this evening will be Mr. Kevin Samuelson.
Good evening. Over the past several meetings, I have walked through the Army values of leadership. Tonight is the last one, selfless service. When I joined the Army at seventeen, I was taught that selfless service means sacrifice. Sacrifice for your country, your unit, and your brothers and sisters in arms. In war, I expected to give my life if needed. I survived. So the meaning of selfless service changed for me. It became serving my community. Since then, I have tried to serve by speaking with people who carry trauma and by showing up here to advocate for families. My wife chose service too. She became a speech-language pathologist to help students find their voice. She kept serving even when it was hard, because that is what service means. I believe many of you on this board also came here to serve. You give your evenings, your energy, and your attention, and for that I thank you. Selfless service means putting the welfare of others before your own. It means going a little further, enduring a little longer, and looking a little closer to see how you can add to the effort. For this district, that means putting students and parents first. It means acknowledging when services were disrupted. It means notifying families when their children's rights under IEP and 504 plans were affected. It means fixing what went wrong and showing the public the steps you took to make it right. When I pray for guidance, I ask for accountability and transparency. I have heard you pray for wisdom to lead well. Maybe we are asking for the same thing. Before I finish, I want to recall something this board once stated to my wife and me during our first Level III grievance: Nothing will change. Comal ISD is no longer run like an education system, it is run like a business. Those words have stayed with me, but I still believe things can change if this board chooses to serve with the same selflessness it expects from others. When I retired from the military, I thought my days of service were done. I never imagined I would one day be testifying before Congress or standing in federal court to defend my First Amendment rights after this district allegedly muted my microphone. I never expected the same values I learned as a soldier would bring me here, still serving in a different way. I do not know where tomorrow will lead, but I know the journey has been guided by the same purpose: to serve, to speak the truth, and to protect what matters. Every value we have discussed leads here: loyalty, duty, respect, honor, integrity, and personal courage. All point towards selfless service. My family has tried to live it. I am asking the board to live it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuelson. Our next speaker will be Ms. Jamie Watts.
Good evening. I am the grandmother of a special education student attending Churchill Middle School. My granddaughter was recently diagnosed with autism last year. Since that diagnosis, we've been fighting to get her the help that she needs to be successful. Due to the age limits and insurance, we have been unsuccessful. First and foremost, school staff continue to refuse to follow her safety plan. This information is not only obvious by the things that they are doing and not doing, but also reported by staff at the school. We have gone over the safety plan numerous times this year and last, but they continue to ignore it. My question is, why is there even a safety plan if they're not going to follow it? I also want to know why everyone involved, including myself, is not being invited to and participating in these art meetings. I was actively involved last year with invites always being sent to me, but this year, nothing. Yesterday was a prime example of Churchill Middle School not following my granddaughter's safety plan. When she asked the school to call her mother, they refused. When she asked them to call her Yes Waiver Crisis Team, they refused again. When she asked for them to call MCOT Crisis Team, they also refused. However, Churchill Middle School felt she was in crisis enough to send her home with a letter for us ordering that she be evaluated before returning to school. If she was truly in crisis, why wasn't MCOT called? What if she'd gone home and hurt herself or someone else? Is that a lawsuit you're ready to take on? My daughter didn't even see the letter until 8:30 PM after she returned home. By the time I was able to take her for an evaluation this morning, it was over twelve hours past the incident at school. Why didn't the school call to explain this to my daughter instead of sending home a letter? If it's severe enough to not let her return to school, shouldn't that warrant a direct phone call with information regarding the incident and their directives? I took her to Hill Country this morning with no information to share with them other than she had an episode at school. How can they effectively assess her for an incident without any information? You see, my daughter is a single mom of two autistic children, ages four and thirteen. She can't do it on her own, so I'm having to step up and help. Numerous school staff have either quit or been let go for no reason. I mean, it appears... There's no consistency. I have reached out to disability rights. They can no longer assist due to funding, so I'm being forced to hire legal counsel to properly support my granddaughter and make sure her rights are protected. I had a lot more to share, but I'm almost done.
Thank you, Ms. Watts. Our next speaker will be Mr. Tristan Cleve.
Good evening, board. My name is Tristan Cleve. I'm a graduate of one of these fine schools. And so, the first thing I actually came here to do was probably... It's to address SB 13 and SB 10 and the district's noncompliance. These two laws were supposed to be implemented September 1st. And as I understand it today, not every classroom has the documents, the Ten Commandments, posted in them as SB 10 mandates by state law. I understand there's a lawsuit involved, and that's the excuse the district is giving, but it is an excuse. There's no excuse not to follow state law. Put the commandments in there, and if you need more copies, I'd be happy to furnish them if you'll just give us a direct number as to how many you need. I'll get you every one you need, but they need to go in there by state law. Second is SB 13. SB 13, for those that aren't paying attention, is the book law. And in New Braunfels, Comal County, in general, both school districts, this is a hot topic, and you should be engaged in it if you're not currently. This is the time to make your voice heard, that the books are inappropriate, and there are dozens of them still in our schools, which means our district is not in compliance with SB 13. You have the ability to... Actually, you don't have the ability. You have the duty as the board. The buck does stop with you. It doesn't fall to the slats. It doesn't fall to the librarians. Ultimately, whatever books are in our schools falls on this body. So we know of at least a dozen and a half books that are still on shelves that should be taken out. We'll challenge them, even though the challenge is not part of what SB 13 says. We'll jump over the hurdle to do it, but it's not a requirement. Getting the books out is. It also, if you have book purchases to make, you have not posted the book lists to give parents the thirty days review time that they have. So if you have books to order in October, I kindly ask you to suspend those transactions until you have posted and given thirty days, as SB 13 requires, for parents to review the new material coming into the schools. Profane and indecent material doesn't belong in schools. There's nothing educational about it. There's nothing educational about taking a kid who should be focused on math and science and all of the things that you should be focused on in your core studies and trying to trans them, queer them, turn them against themselves. You're not helping anybody from an educational or spiritual position. Your duty is to represent the people who put you in those seats, and I think I speak on behalf of most dads in New Braunfels and in Comal County districts. What they expect you to do is to treat their kids how you would treat your own. And if you wouldn't read those books to your kids, then you shouldn't have them available to our kids. And I just ask you, in a loving way this time, to please take these and follow through. That's what the dads and the moms that aren't here tonight would want you to do, because I've been here for twenty-eight years, and that's what they've all said to me for twenty-eight years. Stand up, be accountable, and represent the people you're here to represent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cleve. All right, the next agenda item is Number Four, Board President's Comment. I just would like to say thank you for being here. Enjoy the student celebrations that we got to have today. And we are going to move on to our next agenda item, Number Five, Superintendent Reports and Board Information in 5A, so Bond Construction and Capital Project Update. I will turn it over to Mr. Mark Stahl and Ms. Jenny Hale.
Good evening, President Biassati, Trustees, and Dr. Chapman. Tonight, we are pleased to present the October update on bond... Excuse me, on bond and capital projects. This report reflects our continued commitment on delivering high-quality learning environments aligned with our district's strategic priorities. In addition tonight, Jenny Hale from Business Services will provide parallel insight into these projects from a financial perspective, ensuring we maintain transparency and fiscal responsibility throughout our work. Our construction efforts are directly aligned with Priority Six of the 2023 through 2028 Collaborative Vision Strategic Plan, which states facilities, growth, and planning. These projects are not just about infrastructure. They're strategic investments in the future of our students, staff, and community.
The financial information included in this presentation is going to be found on the district's website using Owner Insight. If you have internet access to the website, you can follow along. However, we've included screenshots in the presentation tonight so that the slides keep moving fluidly. Please remember that Owner Insight updates every morning at 7:00 AM with fresh data. The screenshots used this evening were obtained prior in the week, and so there could be some updates that are currently listed that may have run this morning. To access Owner Insight, please go to the district website. You will select About Comal, then choose Bond at Work. Scroll down the page until you see the selection for Owner Insight. The embedded program is very small to read. Therefore, please select the Bond Budget Interactive Map button in blue. By selecting the Bond Budget Interactive Map button, a new window will open with a full-screen view that is much easier to navigate. Specific selections can be made by choosing options located in the left margin to drill down into the data. Again, if you have internet access to the website, you're welcome to follow along, or you can choose to go through the system when you have more time at leisure.
We will begin this evening with the 2021 Bond Program, which has focused on critical upgrades and deferred maintenance across several campuses throughout our district. These projects are nearing completion and delivering tangible improvements. At Memorial Early College High School, roof replacement continues on the south end of the building as displayed in the photograph here. We remain on track for anticipated completion in February, improving building performance and long-term durability.
The Bond 2021 Memorial Early College High School Roofing and HVAC Project is included with System Package III. Mr. Stahl described the ongoing roofwork at Max, and it's important to recognize how these improvements translate into financial commitments. The roofing and HVAC project is budgeted at $835,000 with eighty-nine thousand five hundred, or approximately eleven percent of the budget expense at this time.
We have achieved substantial completion on HVAC and roof upgrades at Fry Height and Oak Creek Elementary Schools. As reflected on this slide, these enhancements support better climate control and energy efficiency for our students, staff, and the community.
The HVAC and roof replacement projects at Fry Height and Oak Creek are part of System Package I. The total budget allocated for System Package I is $10.4 million. With substantial completion reached at both Fry Height and Oak Creek Elementary Schools, the financials reflect the scale of these upgrades. Over $5 million for each campus has been incurred for a combined total of $10.2 million, representing ninety-seven percent of the System Package I budget.
Smithson Valley High School has entered the retro commissioning phase for HVAC systems, including automated controller upgrades. This is a seventeen-month process with anticipated completion in March of 2027. Although not as visually engaging, this work ensures optimal performance and long-term sustainability of our mechanical systems.
The Bond 2021 Smithson Valley High School HVAC Controller and Retro Commissioning Project is included with the district-wide HVAC control updates. It's budgeted at $279,000. The district has incurred costs of $47,000, or approximately seventeen percent of the budget at this time. As we wrap up the Bond 2021 program for this evening, the financials show strong execution across a wide range of projects. Of the $445.8 million approved by voters in November of 2021, just over $376 million... Of the $445.8 million approved by voters in November of 2021, just over $376 million or 87% has been spent, reflecting a commitment to delivering value and transparency.
Now turning to the 2023 Bond Program. We are advancing several major projects that support enrollment growth, program expansion, and facility modernization. Middle School Number Nine is progressing on schedule. Concrete foundation work and steel erection are underway. CMU walls are rising, and MEP systems are actively being installed. As you can see from the site picture on this slide, this site is taking shape rapidly. It is on target for completion by the summer of 2027.
As Middle School Nine rapidly takes shape, it's important to remember that the construction progress will always be farther ahead than the financial side. This lag is expected, as major expenditures typically follow structural milestones like the steel erection and MEP installation. In this project, the construction of Middle School Number Nine is currently budgeted at $123.5 million with $33.6 million or approximately 27% being expensed at this time.
At Life Bridges, the contractor has mobilized, and mass excavation is underway, as shown on this slide. This marks a significant milestone in preparing the site for vertical construction. Following an extensive permitting process with the City of New Braunfels, the project is currently scheduled for completion in October of 2026, based on a 12-month construction timeline. However, both our team and the contractor remain focused on accelerating progress and are actively working toward an earlier delivery.
With site work at Life Bridges beginning, the financial side is also initiating. As vertical construction begins, we anticipate a steady increase in expenditures over the upcoming months. Currently, the Life Bridges replacement campus is budgeted at $15.9 million with just over $1 million or approximately 7% expense.
Elementary School Number 22 is currently in design development. Construction documents are expected in November, with an expected construction start date in February of 2026, and an anticipated completion of summer of 2027. As illustrated on this slide, the exterior renderings of the campus have been thoughtfully and intentionally designed to harmonize with the surrounding environment, incorporating contextual architectural elements that reflect the character of the area. This campus will serve a rapidly growing area of our district.
As the design development process keeps moving, the financial activity is still minimal. Once construction documents are finalized and contracts awarded, we'll see a significant uptick in financial activity. Elementary School Number 22 is budgeted at $71.8 million. At this time, just over $1 million or approximately 2% has been expensed.
At Canyon Lake High School, roof installation is the next major phase of construction for the new locker facilities, as displayed in the top photograph. Below that, the foundation is completed for the baseball and softball storage facilities, now awaiting vertical construction. We anticipate completion of these exterior buildings in February of 2026, if not sooner. Lastly, the interior renovations of the former dance space are also underway, which support expanded athletic programming on the campus. We anticipate completion of this interior space in early November.
With multiple scopes of work underway at Canyon Lake High School, the financials reflect steady progress. These reinvestment efforts are carefully phased to align with athletic seasons and facility availability. A total of $11 million is allocated for the reinvestment projects at Canyon Lake High School. Currently, the district has incurred costs of $6.7 million or 61%.
The upper image on this slide displays Davenport High School's completed poultry barn, highlighted in red, and ag barn addition highlighted in yellow. In the lower image, you can see the courtyard fencing, which is also complete, enhancing both safety and aesthetics on the campus.
Previously, the Davenport High School and Smithson Valley High School reinvestment projects were combined due to the nature of the contract. We have separated the major scopes of the projects to allow for better transparency. Zooming in to Davenport High School specifically, $4.9 million or approximately 57% of its allocated budget has been spent.
Smithson Valley High School continues to advance. As demonstrated on this slide, the peer work is ongoing for the new JROTC and wrestling building, with foundation pouring to begin this week, tomorrow morning as a matter of fact, very early. We are on schedule for a summer of 2026 completion on this project. The design work is also nearing completion for the dance, cheer, and athletic locker rooms.
At Smithson Valley High School, the reinvestment projects are well underway with $10.7 million or 34% of the budget expense. As design work wraps up for additional renovations of dance, cheer, and athletic spaces, we expect further financial commitments to come in soon.
System Packages 1, 2, and 3 updates include HVAC Energy Recovery Unit Installation at Startsville Elementary School, that you can see in the upper image. We anticipate this project being completed in December of this year. The lower image highlights the roof replacement at Clear Spring Elementary, being substantially complete. We have also reached completion of Phase 2 HVAC replacement at Timberwood Park Elementary School. All of these upgrades improve operational efficiency and indoor air quality on these campuses. Mountain Valley Middle School roof replacement is substantially complete, as presented in the top image. Pre-work has begun at Churchill Middle School for HVAC and lighting upgrades, as illustrated in the image below. For Churchill, we anticipate completion of this work in August of 2026.
As Mr. Stahl highlighted with the various system upgrades, it's important to note that these packages represent a significant portion of our bond investment. In addition to the projects just reviewed, there are several other projects also included in the system packages for Bond 2023. A total of $70.8 million is allocated for the system packages. Approximately 45% or over $32 million has been expensed to the various projects as we move through completion of all system packages of Bond 2023.
At Canyon High School, further mobilization is shown in the upper image, and roof replacement begins this week, as illustrated in the image below. For the roof project alone, we anticipate a 17-month timeline with an anticipated completion in March of 2027. Additional work this fall includes exhaust fan... Excuse me, exhaust fan upgrades, interior renovations, and fire alarm enhancements.
With design work and roof replacement now underway at Canyon High School, the financials are just beginning to reflect activity. More work is scheduled to start in January, and we anticipate a sharp increase in expenditures. At Canyon High School reinvestment project of Bond 2023, it's budgeted at $32 million with a total of $1.1 million or approximately 4% spent at this time. In May of 2023, voters approved $558.6 million for projects including construction of new campuses, new buses, land acquisition, safety and security, and technology projects across the district. To date, approximately $175.5 million or 30% has been spent on the completion of these projects.
This concludes our October update on bond projects. As always, we appreciate your continued support and oversight. We're happy to address any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks for the presentation. Obviously, this is... We continue to be very excited about this level of transparency on this. One thing I was going through, and you know, being a numbers geek, so I'm trying... I know we've saved money on lots of projects. Like, for example, I can see that, like, Belverde Middle looks like saving about $3 million from the original budget, as you look at the total. But is there a way to look and see, like, if I'm a citizen, to go, well, how much have they saved total? It doesn't seem like there's a way to go to see the total savings that you've had thus far, is it?
That's a little bit difficult to identify, because when we allocate a budget, it's done when we pass the bond, okay? So that's where the budget gets allocated. As contracts roll in, as invoices roll in, different things, then they start working off of those projects. Once they're closed out, we... The budget that was spent becomes the allocated budget or the adjusted budget. So we always know what that original budget was that we can relate back to, but it's not going to be... It's not going to be transparent on the website.
This is from... Once you sign the contract to actually do the project.
And you'll see the amount that is... That's incurred is the actual invoices that we've received, and then the committed costs are the actual purchase orders when those are input into the system.
Yeah, right. And then, so like, if I added up the total of committed cost or... Yeah, committed costs plus balance to finish, it's only $873 million, so it's well below the $1 billion. So, yeah, I mean, we're obviously saving money, but it's...
And some of the committed costs are still not in there because we don't have those purchase orders yet. We haven't signed those contracts in any of the new upcoming areas.
Yeah. All right. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Hennessy.
Thank you, Madam President. Possibly following up to Mr. Garner's comment in relation to showing, you know, whatever savings we have, I was kind of thinking of it as like a bonus job, or like, hey, we got a, you know, an extra playground out of this deal, or something like that, if we could announce in whatever fashion, you know? Obviously, we know that they are extremely judicious in keeping budgets, staying on budgets, and often coming under budget. But I do agree that that would be nice to be able to share that somehow, but I understand the difficulty in doing that.
Yeah, we just have to put it on a... We just have to put it on a different platform and use it in your reporting, because we can do that. Yeah, very easy.
Okay.
Not on Owner Insight, but we can do it on a... Yeah, which we can show you that simply. We'll... Yeah, we can figure out how to start reporting that with this, too. Yeah, we'll figure something out.
Just so that we can give the kudos where they're deserved and just say, hey, this district is doing amazing things, because, you know, often it's the... Well, it should be the dollar that we're, you know, most concerned about, so...
We're saving tens of thousands of dollars.
Right. Not to mention the $22 million in defeesence, so... Next question, and I'm going to jump over Mr. York, I think, on this one. We were talking a little bit about the roofing over at Canyon High School, and in particular, where we stand with those projects. I know we've got a storm coming Friday night, and was just curious if we're putting some buckets out preemptively.
Yeah, so literally with Canyon High School roof project, we have literally just kicked that off this week, coordinated with the administration over at the campus, just to coordinate. It's a major progress, as you saw. It's about a 17-month, hopefully quicker, depending upon the weather. As much as we need rain, construction department never enjoys rain, especially when you're doing a roof project. So we literally just kicked off the actual work this week.
Fantastic. Thank you for that update. And just for you guys to know, the reports from parents over there, they're excited to see that fencing. They're excited to know that things are happening over there. And I've been able to explain the process, you know, that you have to do A before B before C. And so that's not really... The general public doesn't fully understand that. They kind of would like to see things tomorrow, but I can tell you that we're excited for what's happening over there. Thank you.
Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a particular question. I would just like to footstomp a little bit here, you know? For those folks who may... I mean, we're a couple of years away from the 23 bond, and just to take a look at the slide where, you know, half of the funding is new construction. It is a fast-growth district, but I love that the other half, in equal measure, is making sure that our existing facilities are up to snuff. And I know you all have a lot of, you know, projects to juggle and prioritize, and I can't believe how many things you've got going at one time. So I just want to, you know, kudos to you. And, you know, in terms of budgeting, too, everybody loves to come under budget, but coming from a financial services background, we also love people who budget accurately, too. So, you know, the fact that you never go over is wonderful, but I wouldn't be looking for giant bogies under you. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, guys, for that presentation. I have seen firsthand the transparency just improved, sitting in the seat the past few years, and I know that the work is very tedious, but it's been so refreshing to be able to send this website over instead of hearing it from the seven of us. And while we are up here to be able to walk them through it, I was talking to a community member, and even just that expenditure breakdown in the top right corner, when they're understanding system packages and everything like that. And to y'all's point, I don't know who said it, but the visually engaging, those that are and those that aren't, right? To see that the new projects are happening and the new facilities, but also the existing ones, that we don't always see, right? But they are benefiting our schools. And so I just want to give y'all kudos to the promises made, the promises kept, and keep this work up, because I think this is what our community needs to see, and I'm very thankful that y'all are putting in the time, both on the spreadsheet, but also in the areas of construction and updates and everything as well. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. I just have one comment, really a question. Did I hear you correctly? The Smithson Valley Retro Commissioning was going to take 17 months?
Well, it's a combination project. We're doing two things. Part of it is replacing every control mechanism in every piece of mechanical equipment throughout the building. In conjunction with that, we're doing retro commissioning, very similar to what we did with Canyon High School back in 2017. And it greatly enhances the efficiency of the building, the software system that we're able to see. So when they're doing the controls portion of it, they literally have to check every data line that goes from the IDF rooms to the actual piece of equipment. Some of those will have to be replaced, just because they've aged out. So, yes, ma'am, it's a long-duration project.
Okay, that makes more sense. I thought we were just adding, but we're basically diagnosing and fixing where needed. Okay. To Mr. Hennessy and Mr. Garner's comment about the transparency of our savings and Ms. Shaw's, you know, there's that fine line, right, between we need this much money, oh, never mind, no, we don't, we save this much, and... But I do think it's so important to be able to, even if it's just a document, like Dr. Chapman said, not on here, but somewhere where we can say, hey, you know, here's our cost savings from these bonds. Not too deep, but, and here's what we did with those. Simple. And I think, obviously, we'd have legal look over that, make sure everything was good, but I think that'd be something that would be really neat for the public, because, like Mr. Hennessy said, we hear and see all the savings that we're doing, and it'd be great to be able to say, hey, check our website. And to Ms. Jones' point, I have said a million times since you guys have launched this, when I get the question about anything with bond, now that the bond buzz is going again, and people are digging in and loving this opportunity. So thank you for all your hard work to get this going, because it's been a huge help for us up here. So, thank you.
All right. We'll proceed to our next agenda item, number six, Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the Board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes a list of all consent agenda items, and the Board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the consent agenda, Board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda at this time? Hearing none and seeing none, Board members, do I have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Mr. Garner.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. With a vote of six in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. Now, we will skip to Item 7B, Consideration and Possible Approval of Purchase of Stadium Wireless Networks. The next item is 7B, consideration... I'm reading that twice, sorry. Consideration and possible approval with purchase of stadium wireless networks. I will turn it over to Mr. Scott Monroe.
President Biassati, Dr. Chapman, members of the Board, good evening. So you have in front of you a proposal, the 2023 bond allocated $1.5 million to do wireless connectivity at the stadiums. million dollars to, uh, do wireless connectivity at the stadiums, and so, the one-point-two-four-nine-seven-oh-three-point-eight-three-million-dollar, um, proposal was after we were able to, to solicit competitive bids, get several companies to walk all five stadiums, and, and provide us with proposals, we're able to come in, you know, somewhat under the one-point-five-million-dollar budget, and this is for robust, complete coverage of the entire stadium sites. Is there any questions?
So I, so I did meet with several, uh, a couple, um, board members talking a little bit about this, this was in the bond, and we are, we are proceeding, but I do ask the question, what are we, why, and so, um, I mean.
Yeah, I can, it wasn't, uh, here, during the twenty-twenty-three bond committees that put this together, my understanding and researching it, a lot of it was tied to safety and security, so that, um, SROs could have access to tap into our, uh, video systems for things across the stadium, um, but this would also provide access for, you know, athletic use, um, fans in the stands, um, it is a, it's a very robust proposal, um, that certainly, you know, we could have targeted areas that, that was less, but this does, does cover the entire sites.
Um, in your professional opinion, um, if it's a safety, well, first off, if it's a safety and security issue, which I believe is how it was presented to us, um, I would be in favor for that, but in your, in your professional opinion, what you are actually doing, um, by in, installing this, is it necessary?
You know, certainly situations you could envision where it was helpful, if there was a reunification at the stadium after a school evacuation or something, you could need broad coverage, certainly, um, if there was an event, so, you know, SRO might need to access cameras and things, it feels like that they likely would go inside the, the facility, um, you certainly could cover critical areas, like the press box, the, the home and potentially visitor sidelines for considerably less, though I will say, the visitor side is a, a good part of the expense, because some of the stadiums don't have, so there's pretty good variation from the one-seventy-six on the low end up to about three-hundred-thousand on the high end, some of that has to do with what kind of infrastructure has to be put in place to get from one side of the stadium to the other, some of the newer stadiums may already have that in place, and so there's a, there's a considerable amount of the expense goes towards covering the visitor side, um, which I think is, uh, potentially a little overkill.
All right, I'm gonna ask my fellow board members, Mr. Hennessy, you're ready?
Thank you, Madam President, I'm not exactly sure that I'm, I'm asking a question, well, I am asking a question, do you think that we should have a further discussion regarding this, if it's not, um, you know, uh, again, when we talk about the dollar, it's gotta be something that is, uh, beneficial for kids as well, and I, let me ask you this, is there a temporary solution, like, let's say, game night, and we just wanted to provide the whole stadium wifi, is there any way to do that with any?
No, not really.
It's gotta be a wired setup, hard.
Partially due to, um, the lack of good cell, cellular coverage at some of our, our sites and stadiums, um, which would make any sort of, sort of like cradle point type environment, probably not, uh, sufficient bandwidth to do the kind of safety things we're talking about, um, or anything like streaming, game film, or, or those type uses as well, um, you know, you could probably do things like ticket, ticket scanning or ticket taking with a, a more temporary cellular-based system, but not, not the athletic or safety uses, that really requires a hardwired connection to our fiber network with, you know, band, high bandwidth internet, and then, you know, real access points that are mounted around the stadium.
Okay, so, the, the, next question, then, with, safety, security, um, is, is how I remember it too, Ms. Biassadi, is how that was sold to us, um, and I don't want to divulge anything that I shouldn't, so I'm gonna be very careful in my questioning, but outside of the actual physical building, if you're outside those walls at one of our high schools, not saying in the stadium, do the officers have the access, the wifi access that they need?
It's pretty limited outside the buildings right now, we are adding some access points, um, as we, we do the security upgrades and network upgrades to the outside of buildings, but generally, once you're outside the building, it is pretty limited in terms of wireless coverage.
So my question to my fellow board members is, um, help me with my memory if I could, it was my understanding that, in some of our previous packages, that there was the ability for an officer to remain, right, am I getting too close to safety, security right now?
If you, if you, here's the deal. Y'all, if you know what it's for, let's do it, it's, it's, I mean, it's in the bond, it's in bond twenty-one, let's just go ahead and do the work, it's just, we couldn't find any resources of what's the reasoning behind it, and to get this, that's why I put it as an action item.
Understood.
But y'all, you have a clear understanding why, so I highly recommend we do it, because that's what we said we were gonna do.
Yes, thank you for that, and, and the reason my hesitancy is that I, I just had a feeling that, that maybe it wasn't exactly what we thought it was going to be, and that's what I heard down the dais, I agree with the reasoning as to why we approved this in the first place, and that's the reasoning that I'm sticking with in, in my head, um, and I don't question that side of things, um, so, from the safety, security side standpoint, this does provide coverage, service to our law enforcement officials, and they're able to do some magic things when they have that sort of coverage, so.
It's certainly not gonna turn anything, it is, it is expensive to do outdoor wifi and do it properly, although I will say, you know, there's, I've seen a lot of costs where people have spent, uh, easily a million dollars to do one stadium, and so getting, getting five stadiums for one-point-two with contingency is, is.
And do you have a, a lifespan potential on this, I know anything electronic is?
I think at least seven years.
Okay, at least five to seven?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
This is wifi seven, which is the brand-new standard, and so the end of, end of service life on this gear should be seven to even ten years, I would think.
Okay, thank you.
Um, is there anything with our, our launch of our new safety, um, that we're doing at all the schools, is there anything that would, that you're seeing in this package that was presented that, that would handle?
Well, it would tie into that, some, like I said, with, with officer access to those new camera systems that are inside the buildings, but also, potentially, um, the Vercata system does, does offer wireless cameras and things, so if we needed to place, um, a camera covering somewhere on the stadium that we didn't have wired access to, this could support that as well.
So since you haven't been able to find anything specific about this project, are you starting from scratch with just this?
Oh, no, 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 the reasoning behind it, the reasoning, it's in there, it's very specific on do, what to do and how to do it.
Just, there was no conversation piece of why, okay.
Can, can, can somebody explain the reasoning behind it, that's why I only put it in there, but I highly recommend you just, you do it, it's in the, it's in the bond.
I just found the one-point-five-million dollars that was allocated to do it, and we made sure that we stayed under that amount, but not a lot of information on the conversations that went into putting it in the package.
Ms. York?
So, and, thank you, Madam President, thank you for the presentation, I, and I do, I, I can go through my notes and such, but I do know that there was no, um, acting, safety and security, um, person, if you will, during this, the conversations are beginning to build the bond, so I do feel that a lot of the conversations we had behind closed doors were, it was definitely told us all about safety and security, and, and the need there, and again, I mean, this was two and a half years ago, to where, you know, we, we, we didn't have some of the capabilities that we currently have now, but, based on recommendation superintendent, and it is in bond twenty-twenty-three, for safety and security technology systems, I, Madam President, move to approve the purchase of safety and security technology systems and associated products and services as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? With a vote of six in favor, zero opposed, the motion carries, thank you. The next agenda item is number eight, closed session as authorized under Texas Government Code, including, but not limited to sections five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-six, five-five-one-point-zero-eight-two, five-five-one-point-zero-eight-two-one, five-five-one-point-zero-eight-four, five-five-one-point-zero-eight-nine. Item eight A pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, consideration and discussion, recommendation to terminate the employment of probationary contract employee Tyler Thrash at the end of the contract term. Item eight B pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, consider and discuss employment, appointment, assignment, and promotion of personnel and resignations and retirements. Audience members are welcome to remain in the boardroom as board members recess for deliberations, the time is now seven fifty-five. Audience members are welcome to remain in the boardroom as board members recess for deliberations. The time is now 7:55. Audience members are welcome to remain in the boardroom as board members recess for deliberations. The time is now 7:55. Audience members are welcome to remain in the boardroom as board members recess for deliberations. The time is now 7:55.